It's not.
I'm not ready to suggest it.
I don't know what she turned it down to, but I was.
Well, it was hot earlier, but I just turned it back up.
It was on sixty nine degrees.
Seventy one now.
It would be appropriate for me to wear my winter coat.
It's six o'clock. You guys ready to go?
Every one of you.
Ready to go over. Okay, we will call the order. Call a city council meeting for Thursday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty one. To order, it is six P M. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Reva.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Mayor Tom Phillips.
All right, I'm here as well. We do have quorum, so we will move on. So for those on the Zoom meeting, if you want to speak to an agenda item, go ahead and unmute your microphone and speak up during public comment. You can also let us know you have some input by raising your Zoom hand or by flagging us in the chat box. We'll recognize you during public comment. Also, don't forget to mute your microphone after you've made your comments. Thank you. Just to let you know, also, there is a time delay on the YouTube meeting, so we will not respond to questions that may be texted to people in council chambers. If you'd like to ask questions during the meeting, please either attend in person or attend via the Zoom meeting. Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is pledge allegiance. Would you please rise and say in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Item three is approval of the agenda. I had a request to move item six F to the regular agenda. Would anybody like to move any other consent agenda items to the regular agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion second.
Okay, motion by Livingston, second by Cool. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same? Motion carries. Item four is welcome of guests and public comment. I'd like to introduce our Kosovo delegation that's here with us tonight. We have Minister of Local Government, Albert Krasnicki. I hope I don't. I don't mingle with your guys' names too bad. We have Mr. Trimb Barisha, Acting General Secretary of MLGA. We have Mr. Ilavala, is that right?
Is that right?
Sounds right.
Awesome. Acting Director, Department of Intermunicipal and Cross Border Cooperation. And Mr. Gizmir Racy. Did I get that one good?
Certainly not, but.
Close enough. Cross border cooperation officer and antenna project. Minister, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate here, dear mayor, it's my pleasure being here with you. I had the opportunity to meet some of you before we discussed about all the possibilities we have to strengthen our cooperation between Iowa and Kosovo and specifically between your city and this university that is your counterpart city in Kosovo. We look forward to create more opportunities and more chances that also ordinary people of both two cities can meet and exchange. Thank you so much and looking forward to receive NCU in Kosovo.
All right. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Holly for helping the relationship with Kosovo and starting it all and being such a workhorse with this relationship. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie.
So we'll open it up for public comment for non-agenda items. We'll give you a three-minute time limit. We can't take action on these tonight since they aren't on the agenda. We'll see you tomorrow night. We can't take action on these tonight since they aren't on the agenda. Also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda now would be the time. Anybody who'd like to make a comment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on to item five. It's our presentations. So Dennis is not here tonight, correct?
Rob Denman.
No. It's Years of Service Award.
Sorry.
Yeah, so we'll just move on to Rob Denman and company for fiscal year two thousand and twenty one audit.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. My name is Robert Enders. I'm an audit manager with Denman and Company. We have, once again, completed the financial audit for the city of Norwalk for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and twenty one. I believe you have the audit report in front of you in your packets. That report is dense in the best of circumstances, and so, and this is another place to go through that in depth. So we have instead put together a briefer presentation that we'll use as kind of a touchstone for us as we walk through just some highlights on the financial audit that you have in front of you. First, you'll see the court team members associated with the audit. Dave Ellis is the audit partner. Keith Kissinger-Mocker was the audit supervisor doing a majority of the work, and I fit somewhere in the middle there as the audit manager. Just a quick outline of what we'll talk about here, because for a few brief minutes, we'll discuss briefly the independent auditors report, share some summarized financial performance information, and then I'll discuss very briefly controls and a couple of other communication items that we have. Looking first at that independent auditors report, which you can find on page four of the actual audit document itself, just a reminder that these financial statements are those of management. Management is responsible for ensuring their accuracy, ensuring that they comply with the accounting standards, the city uses a cash basis of counting, very common for cities your size, and that internal controls are in place to support the accuracy of those financial statements. Our responsibilities as your auditors is to perform an audit in accordance with our professional standards and to express an opinion on the accuracy of those statements. So in the course of our audit work, we do abundance of testing so that we can get an understanding of those financial transactions and help us come to that audit conclusion that we're looking for. We are happy to say that we are issuing unmodified or clean opinions on these financial statements, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide in our special. Delving into just a few of the numbers that are in this report, in front of you here on the presentation is a short summary of the citywide revenues and expenditures with some comparisons to the prior period. Citywide revenues count on the cash basis for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and twenty one, just over twenty-six million, declined from the prior period, but bear in mind that bond proceeds, there was a bond issuance in the prior period, which was fairly significant. Otherwise, fairly significant may be an understatement. Otherwise, revenues were inclining up over the prior period. Total expenditures during the year just shy of twenty-five million, a little up, about two point five million up for the prior period. Total change in net cash position took the good of one point three. Now, while that citywide financial statement is meaningful and useful to the city's financials, most of the city's operating decisions are based on governmental fund balances and those individual fund balances. So this sheet you have in front of you here is a quick look at those fund balances of those governmental funds at June thirty, two thousand and twenty one. In total, governmental fund balances, about fifteen point six million, just a shade down from the prior period, a couple hundred thousand, mostly due to capital projects that were completed in the fiscal year. Of that fifteen point six million, just over three million of it related to the general fund itself. One of the mechanisms we've used to look at the health of the general fund is days expenditures in fund balance. So this, this quick chart shows days expenditures and fund balance at fiscal year end over the past four years. At year end, one hundred fifty-four days of fund balance available. Generally speaking, three to six months is considered healthy. City of Norwalk, right in the middle of that threshold and trending slightly up. The city also has three enterprise funds, funds that are funded by charges for services. This is a quick chart looking at the past three years of net operating revenues from these three funds, all of them in the positive for the past year, all of them pretty healthy and growing net operating income, which is used by those funds to support capital projects and debt service requirements. After the financial statements themselves, there's an abundance of note disclosures to the financials, which provides more depth and context to the financial statements. I'm going to gloss over them for the purposes of this evening, but I do encourage you to read those carefully as they do provide some good context to these financials. Along with the audit of the financial statements, we are responsible under our professional standards to review and obtain an understanding of internal control. While we're not testing those controls, we do, again, obtain an understanding so we can perform our audit procedures. If we define deficiencies in those controls, we have a responsibility to evaluate those and report them to governance. So I'm happy to report that we did not identify any deficiencies in your internal controls during the course of this fiscal year audit. Also, the state does ask us to look at certain compliance requirements that the city is responsible for maintaining compliance with. And once again, we did not define any compliance issues that were required to report in this fiscal year. Finally, along with the audit report, there is a two- or three-page short letter that we issue from us to members of governance, to elected officials, and it's intended to provide an opportunity for us as your auditors to express significant audit matters that might be warrant the attention of members of governance. What you have here is a few bullet points of those matters that we are required to communicate. I'm happy to say that there really is a whole lot of excitement here. There were no significant audit adjustments. There were no disagreements with management, which is probably the most important thing I do want to articulate with us, and no difficulties encountered as we performed the audit. In fact, I do want to stop and say thank you to staff who worked diligently to make our job as easy as possible, and we're very grateful for that. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about the audit, the financial statements that are in front of you, or any other matters that I can help with.
All right. Timer, so. I don't know. Clean audit seems to be exciting to me, so.
Yeah, this guy, we not.
Right. We like it this way.
This is. We like it being on even.
Even though audits are good audits.
Yes. Anything else, Rob?
Thank you, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just, I just want to thank Robert and his team. Keith and Terry, they've been really good to work with. They offer really good advice and recommendations when we ask, and I think the transition has been really positive. And I just thank Lindsey and Carrie because they provide a lot of information for this as well, so. Thank you.
All right, you. Thank you. Okay. Let's get into consent agenda. We have approved the October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one minutes of the special city council meeting. Expenditures, we have tax abatements, renewal Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Echo Valley Country Club. New special Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Bellagio Italian Restaurant. A resolution approving the disposal of city property. A resolution proving passed number two to Herberger Construction for the Great Western Trail Connection Phase Two Project. A resolution setting November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty one for a public hearing regarding a rezoning request to change the bulk regulations for land use parcel C in the Brody's Landing Plan Unit Development. And we have correspondence. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion by Reva, second by Baker. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Reva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Item six F is a resolution approving Norwalk Nice Program Agreement with Impact Community Action Partnership Incorporated. Stephanie asked to have this moved to the regular agenda. Do you want to go?
Yes, I asked for it to be removed because I would just like staff to research this a little bit more. Caitlin was very helpful, giving me some information, but over the last two years, we have helped eighteen households, which is great. That's point oh oh two percent of the population, less than one percent of our population. And it was helpful, but the numbers just aren't making sense. So I was asking Jean and Caitlin to just look at that again, because if we have, we divide that by two, and you have nine families a year that you help, and four of them you help twice, that would be thirteen hundred dollars a year that we would be out of pocket. And out of pockets, I don't like to say that. For the donations that we get, which is from four percent of our households, they contribute about seven hundred and fifty dollars a year to that program. So if we have thirteen hundred obligations and seven fifty in donations, the city should only be out of pocket like fifty, five hundred and fifty dollars. So I was just questioning the twenty-five hundred and also wondering if this is good use of the money. I mean, I know it's twenty-five hundred dollars, and I want to help even eighteen families that were nine families. That's great, but is there a program that would be more impactful and help more residents?
Is there money sitting? So my question would be, is the money that we've contributed plus what the citizens contributed just sitting there to be used?
It's, you know, I will get more information. I didn't always really helping nine people. I thought there were a lot more than that. So let me gather some more information. I know they had some transition at impact, and maybe it is too much. Maybe we should just look at reducing the city contribution.
Yep. The balance in the account right now is four hundred and fifty-two dollars, that's a six cents, so there's not a lot that's sitting there.
But we've only spent thirteen hundred to help people in our.
No, I'm saying going forward.
Oh.
If you're, if the same statistics hold, we would be helping nine families, four of them twice, so thirteen hundred dollars would be going out the door. But we're collecting donations of seven fifty, so the city shouldn't need the twenty.
And we already contributed five thousand, so there should be a balance sitting there to.
The balance is four hundred and fifty-two. What the, during the prior year, the council passed that families could get up to five hundred dollars relief because of COVID, and so it drew down the balance that was there quickly. So now going forward, we're back to the, you get a maximum one hundred dollars per request. You can make two requests.
Yes, and it's a group that vets this also charge percentage for.
They do, yes.
I'm sure it's not a lot of money. It's probably part of it.
That's part of it. It's probably worth it so that our staff doesn't have to pick and choose who gets the money.
Right, yeah.
So I just, I, my recommendation is that we would pick alternative three, which is that staff should conduct further research. I'm not saying it's a bad program, I just like look at it a little bit closer.
So is that a motion to table?
Sure, like second.
Motion by Reva, second by Livingston, to table. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item seven, old and new business for consideration discussion and possible action. Item A is resolution officially naming depositories for the city of Norwalk for the remainder of two thousand and twenty-one and calendar year two thousand and twenty-two. So this is something we do every year, but we're naming the depositories early this year because we need to increase the limit at City State Bank because of bond proceeds. Jean, anything you'd like?
That is correct. Our current limit is thirty-five million. So we thought with the nine point two, we should go to forty-five million, although we are not going to borrow nine point two, but I will talk about that under updates. But I do think in the future, we'll need to go to this amount as well anyway, so.
All right. Any questions, comments from council? Any public comments? Can I get a motion?
Motion second.
Motion by Cool, second by Baker. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Upstate.
Thank you. Baker.
Yes.
Reva.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven B is resolution to approve policy stating when the city may consider accepting private streets into the public street network. Wayne's updated the policy regarding accepting private streets in the public network. I'll turn it over to you.
Pretty much the same as we had last time with the addition that we will consider if the street was designed and intended to be a public street in the future, two examples being the school streets.
Okay. All right. Any questions, comments from council?
Sound good.
Motion second.
Still contemplating a comment, sorry. So I am not at all opposed to the policy. I am opposed to including that last sentence of examples. I guess my concern is frankly how it looks and that it appears to have, to suggest a predisposition to the school system, and I just think it would be better if that example wasn't there.
The ordinance doesn't include the example.
It's not an ordinance, it's a policy. But it does include that.
I guess I would take the opposite approach, ma'am. And surprisingly, I guess, disagree on this one. But, you know, I think that if we planned it to be something that would transition to a public asset, then it would make sense that that would be one of the few times you would accept a private street. I don't think we want to be inhabited except the private street.
No, no, I'm not disagreeing with the concept. I am simply stating that I believe the example should be removed from the policy.
Oh, yeah, you wouldn't have the example anyway. You would simply state, right?
The policy right now includes the example. I am proposing we take out the last sentence and remove the example.
Well, fine, then we won't have a disagreement. Oh, I got it. I wasted all that.
Any other comment? So do you want to revise your motion to strike?
Yes, from examples unstricken. I thought the example was for our purpose. I didn't realize it was part of the ordinance.
So, so, no, because you're taking just the last sentence that starts with examples, right?
Examples of.
Yeah. Sorry, I was reading, and I thought the whole exception piece was going away.
No, just examples of that, that, that.
All right, perfect.
Okay.
Second, yeah, sorry. I'll second the amended motion.
Thank you. Any, any other comments or anything?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a motion by Baker, second by Lester. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yeah.
Reva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. Item seven, approval of the annual urban renewal area U R A report. So this is another item that we need to submit to the state every year. Jean, I'll let you go with this one.
Okay, this report might look a little redundant, but there is a method to the madness. I think they want you to look at the projects that are affiliated with anything we utilize for TIP. They want to look at the debt that we utilize or pay with TIP and then rebates or non-rebates. So that's kind of why it's all broken down. I can quickly go through the report with you. The first few pages just show the summary, the cash balances in the account, what the revenue is and what is expended, and it's, you know, what it's expended on. So it's kind of a summary of that. If you go to, boy, I wish these were numbered. I just realized these aren't numbered. Talks about tax districts within the urban renewal area, kind of shows you the values of those tax increment districts. The projects, it has listed the projects. I will mention that Aliri is complete fiscal twenty-one, LaFredo is complete fiscal twenty-one. So that's, those are, that's good news. Those rebates are done. List out the debts and the obligations, so the general obligation bonds that we issue and utilize TIP to abate those or pay for those. That'll show you the principal balance, the interest balance. I think they just want people to see the total that is utilized. We also have the Ansel Land Grant that was paid as part of Michael Foods. That was thirty-one five. That was complete fiscal year twenty-one. So another rebate, maybe not necessarily rebate, but a grant that was, that was paid off. Then it has, has us list the non-rebates, and this would be like the actual principal and interest amounts for our debts each year, and then any economic development expenses. So Holly's department, what they spend on consulting fees, or I shouldn't say consulting. So like anything we pay to like Greater Des Moines Partnership, things, places or partnerships that we have that we can utilize TIP for. Also, the LMI transfer is in there. We have about one point three million dollars balance in that account as of fiscal year twenty-one. And then we list out the rebates. It's the list is getting shorter, which is kind of nice. We will have Michael Foods will be added to this report this year. This will be the first year they're taking a rebate. The amount wasn't quite there the first year, so, but it's certainly made it this year, twenty-one million, so. Also, they have a jobs report, so they show the jobs that some of these were connected, so like Windsor Windows, Capital City Fruit. Of course, that one will be taken off soon, and then Michael Foods will be added for that jobs. LMI, that we have no, no numbers affiliated with LMI this year because we just haven't spent any money. I believe Norwalk Alice Place, excuse me, will be paid, I believe, this year. So, and then the last several pages just show the values and increments affiliated with those values. Just a note, I, fiscal year twenty-four, will have one hundred and twenty-eight million dollars expiring. That will be about six hundred and twenty-two thousand to our general fund. Be very helpful. I talked to the schools. I let them know as well. Theirs is about a million dollars, but they do get forty-six percent back from the state, so they'll, they'll be about five hundred and sixty thousand to the good. And Kate Baldwin has asked me to attend a subcommittee finance meeting to go over these numbers, and I said I'd be happy to. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Questions, Jean?
Actually, I found that to be pretty interesting. You know, I'm looking through that, and it says, oh, yeah, I remember that. We deal with a lot of projects, you know, and we go, you know, it's tough sometimes to remember for all these things to wrap. And so, actually, I appreciate this report.
I still remember the first year that the state required this additional, this new report, and some of the meaning behind of it, behind it, is there was this thought by the state legislator that cities were abusing TIP. Part of what this helped showed is that, in fact, that is not happening.
Right.
Yeah.
So I'm kind of saying I'm glad the state required a new report. I'm kind of saying that.
Yeah, because it takes time to put it together.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. All right. Okay, thank you. Motion by Lester, second by Livingston. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven D is approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one annual financial report, A F R. This is another report we need to file yearly with the state. Jean, you're on, you're on stage again.
This report's due December first. This is a report that I prepare for the auditors when they come in, and it needs to match up, and it, and it does, where usually maybe a dollar here or there, but the ending fund balances always add up. So just a state required report, they found no discrepancies and no issues with this one.
Questions, comments? Do you want to make a motion?
Motion second.
Okay, motion by Baker, second by Cool. Any further discussion? Lindsey, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Reva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven E is approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one audit. So earlier, Denman and Company presented the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one audit to you guys, and this item approves accepting the auditor's report. Anything to add?
Just to clarify that the general fund balance is six hundred and fourteen thousand, which is really good. We planned a deficit balance when we did the budget for some expenses of about one hundred and fifty-four thousand. We ended up six hundred and fourteen to the good. That is due to some COVID relief funds that we received from the state, and we spent some of the money in twenty, but we didn't spend all of it. So I just wanted to let you know that some of that did go under the reserve. And I think that's it, unless you have any questions about the numbers.
Counsel.
Your motion.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Livingston, second by Lester. Second. Okay, so motion by Livingston, second by Lester. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven F, resolution approving amendment number three to engineering services for Colonial Parkway Regional Detention Facility project. So we're planning on putting a regional stormwater detention facility behind Capital City Fruit. This facility is going to serve Capital City Fruit, it's going to Norwalk Central and the property owned by H H Norwalk. And there might be more in there as well. McClure's been retained as the engineer on the project. Wayne, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. This project, it's gone through a few amendments. We, from the original project, expanded into a regional project and then a bigger regional project. Kind of gone through a few iterations. Most recently, McClure did complete the design and submitted to the D N R for the review. And submitted to us a cost estimate where the cost came back higher than what we were expecting. So a part of that, we asked McClure to investigate ways to reduce the cost. Doing so, they met with the D N R and they found out a bunch of the regulations, rules related to the dam have changed. And surprisingly, making it cheaper or less restrictive. But unfortunately, our design is complete already, so we want council to consider redesigning the project to meet the new standards. The redesign cost is less and the result in savings should far exceed the cost to redesign the project. However, I guess the project's kind of through a few iterations. I think it's worth they bring forward for consideration and discussion. And Gary with McClure is here tonight to help, help me with the technical stuff.
So if we do the redesign, how, how much is good, how much time will be put on the timeline?
You, you timeline, I mean, we expect, you know, assuming.
That's a good idea. So assuming that we move forward with this, we think probably with the holidays, probably the next couple of months, I think we can move forward fairly quickly. We're not talking, you know, six or eight months. We're talking a few months worth of work.
Okay, and just, just to make it official, could you say, state your name?
Gary Brunson, McClure Engineering.
Thank you. All right. What questions does counsel have?
So I've got one comment slash question has nothing to do with.
Okay.
So we haven't agreed to a price on the land where we're going to put this and we don't own it yet. And I have an issue with spending more money on something we are. Hundred percent sure is going to happen at this point. I think we've spent a lot of money on it already and I think we need to table it until we go over the ground.
Wayne, was part of the discussion with McClure about the ability of reducing maybe the footprint? In other words, we now know that there are going to be these large outdoor pods that probably aren't going to require that it's not impervious area. Is there the possibility that maybe the design could actually shrink in size, reducing the amount of land we'd have to purchase from somebody else?
Right, I did forward those on. I don't think that analysis has been done yet. That would be part of the redesign. My, my gut is I hate to assume that's going to be impervious. Too much that's going to remain impervious. Like have little. You know, things seem to always get paid and more parking is added. I'd rather keep it. With the original assumption for that part of it.
And part of what we're going to be doing as well as is updating our hydraulic model with the new classifications. They change the storm event that we must then retain and pass through. And so surprisingly, yes, the, the regulations have actually become a little less restrictive. And so it does change things a bit, which is a major part of the redesign effort. And so from that perspective, that's one of the things we're going to be looking at, but we can't really tell you that for sure without doing some of the work.
Delay, is there a possibility they could become more restrictive given more time? Things are not getting less restrictive anymore.
Yes.
I'm serious.
Don't, I, I can't, I can't answer that, but it is, we, we were honestly somewhat surprised that this, this change occurred. And so from that perspective. You're right, we don't typically see something in this order. It's usually the other.
What if we delay it and it does become, all of a sudden, the new edict comes down, then what? It doesn't, you're restricted one already, so.
Yeah. Technically, I guess we would, we would have a completed design. We have, we have a permit from them for to move forward.
All right.
And then at that point in time, they said, well, we're actually going to be changing these rules now and they're becoming less restrictive. And so from that conversation, that's when we.
Okay.
Got with Wayne and started talking about the fact that we felt there was good opportunity here to potentially reduce some of the overall cost of the project. Because of those changes.
So I'm trying to understand why we're on our third amendment. And. I guess I don't understand. I mean, obviously, if there's changes to regulations that is not necessarily anticipated. But has, has, has everything about this been unanticipated? I mean, why are we now being asked for the third time to change the contract that we entered into?
The service area change?
Excuse me, Ed, the scope of the service contract.
That's, that's correct. The first amendment was expanding the service area. It was, it was a regional pond before, but I think it just served that area number three and four.
And so we thought a change so that we could serve more areas?
For the first amendment, we added, then we, we expanded the service area to make it a bigger pond. Amendment number two was to retain McClure to do the land negotiation for the additional acres. The land transfer that council member Lester is saying hasn't been completed. McClure has been assisting with that. That was the second amendment.
Yes, my question would be. David's question, I guess, the, this is more a question, I guess, mirror for us. That is, is there a need to speed to happen here if like we would do this before we know we've got the area nailed down?
Development agreement, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, there is some importance for timing with the development agreements because we do need to have the detention pond figured out within this. It's part of the development agreement that we'll have with the landowners with diligent.
So we have a timeline with the development agreement.
So it's kind of a domino effect. So this piece needs to be in the development agreement. The development agreement is almost complete. It's in their attorney's hands. It'll come back to us, which then comes to you for approval. So within this gap, we will have to come to an agreement on the price of that land, which there is an agreement right now with diligent. They're comfortable with the price, but we have to bring it back to council to decide if council's okay with that. If not, we go back to the table on it, but that's kind of the last missing link right now is this detention pond and the, and that land in this development agreement. So that development agreement and the sportsplex one will be coming to you guys over the next few weeks. The timing that's sensitive is if we don't get these agreements through the next, you know, month or so, then spring construction may not be able to happen. So that's the timing of things.
So, so those agreements are time sensitive, but this one isn't necessarily time sensitive.
Well, we need the detention pond in the, the diligent.
We've already got an approved plan for it. Why is our detention pond part of their, their development agreement?
Well, just by the land.
But that's, that, that buying the land has nothing to do with changing the thing because if we don't approve the development agreement, we change the scope, we're paying them to do something that we're not doing. That's where I'm trying to figure out that the timing of it doesn't.
Yeah, we could just do the land piece and the diligent agreement and then just continue working separately on the scope of the detention pond, I guess.
I'm trying to figure out why we need to change our engineering agreement before.
We're trying to.
Why, why does our engineering agreement?
Yeah.
We're going to, why does that need to be changed before the development?
We are hoping to lower the cost of the detention pond, therefore maybe we'd need less land.
Yeah.
So we're just trying to. Slim the cost down.
So one, one thing, one thing that I learned with, when we did Elizabeth Hollis is that the detention pond was not completely engineered before some land transactions were done. And unfortunately, the seller sold to United Properties and we had a difficult time getting that land back. Because we didn't have it completely engineered, completely engineered the way we wanted it to be. I think you need to have the engineering done so you know how much property to actually get.
And the other thing you're going to end up.
Otherwise, otherwise we may, we may buy.
We have engineering done in four weeks when the development agreements show up. That's, I, I mean, I understand.
Good point.
I understand, but at the same time, in the development agreement, it doesn't have to say we're going to take this piece of land and buy it from you. They can say we can take up to blank acres of land for, I mean, we don't have to get down to the, I, that's where I'm trying to figure out why we need to amend this.
No, you're right. We can, this can come after.
We were a long way apart on sit per acre price with them before and, and I have a feeling that we're still not down to the number that I think is an acceptable number. I, I'm just trying to be honest tonight and tell you that that's, I, I, they're not our number, so they're not to the number that I was accepted, that I found acceptable. And I didn't even find that number acceptable. I thought it was horrendous, so.
So this agreement specifically, I'm sorry, Wayne, like this is our fault, not yours. So we did go to Wayne and say, hey, can you go back to McClure and see if there's a way to redesign this a little bit to save us some costs? Because when we got to looking at the civil engineering maps that we just now, we're getting these second, third, you know, versions of as are tightening things up. We're like, you know, maybe there's a lot less land here that really will have to be served by this specific pond, so maybe it will save us some money. It may not save this land on the detention pond area specifically, but it may save us the cost of that detention. So we just thought it was worth a try because we have the new civil engineering maps.
We can, the point about changing that language to say up to and not having a, a specific amount, I mean, we could even reference the engineering that we're doing. That's a good point because it could shrink if, I'm being optimistic that that could happen. And if it does, you're right, we wouldn't want to lock ourselves into a purchase of a certain amount.
Yeah, there's a lot of green space in this area now, but.
But I think we need to have engineers, so we know how much we need. So when it's time to pull trigger to buy it, we know how much land actually.
Yeah, for my part, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. My question was has been answered about why, why have we had now to revise this three times? And I understand why we have. So my, my question's answered. I'm not in opposition.
Are we still, what is the price that we're finally at on this last?
So we've gone back and forth between what the city, I think the city was at thirty three an acre, so that's not right. And diligent started at ninety because we had the two different appraisals. And so we worked our way back and forth, back and forth to where we're at. I think it's forty two thousand an acre. So the difference between where they were and where we were is about fifty thousand total. It's pretty.
I just, I couldn't remember. I knew that it'd been back and forth, but I wasn't sure what was the final.
And what, what Holly's still working on, diligent, we're still at thirty three thousand.
They know that's where council wants to be. But yeah, we've hinged a little closer every.
Trying to figure out how to make up that gap and perhaps not with the city so that we're still at that amount.
Yeah, and I guess from, from my perspective to, to your point. Is that this is not a battle that I think we need. I feel like in this whole negotiation, we need to pick our battles and this is not one of the battles we need. If we can have this information or tell them as soon as we're going to have this information, I think that's one less thing for there to have to be more dissension about.
And the agreements are tied to this. I know there's so many connected pieces with this, but this regional detention will have to happen for all of Norwalk Central to happen or every single project that comes in will have to have their own. And that changes how much land's available for retail, commercial, tax.
It changes how we want this to look.
Yeah.
Well, because they can sell their other land for, which is why they are testing way too much money. Yeah, I think it's important from, we've got so many phases along the timeline that all have to happen. I don't mind the idea of running parallel, getting this started. We know it's going to be needed eventually. Why put it off? It's going to have to get done. I don't think I want this to encumber the other issues of by chance, they did drop to thirty three or whatever it was. I think we should move ahead and have this done. If it's something that needs done, we're going to do it. What difference does it make whether doing it now or three weeks from now or one week from now or a month from now? I think it's safe, safer this way. Because if we don't come to an agreement on the other side, if that project doesn't happen, then we've spent more money that doesn't need to be spent.
Realistically, that's the issue.
Realistically, though, this is a this is an expense. I think this is a, why did you?
I do too. I think even if something I don't even want to say something causes this project to not happen, this is, I think, money well spent for the city in general to figure out what we can and can't, will and won't do in the future.
Because at some point in time, we're going.
Right.
I would say, where's the money for this coming from, this extra piece?
We have borrowed money last year when we, when the scope was different. It was a smaller project, so we.
Hey, what, what pays for that in the end? Is it general fund or is it stormwater?
Debt service or.
Which is everybody not specific to another.
And exempt from TIP.
I'm good with it. I think anytime we can plan, because in the end, what this may actually do is save us money. I mean, it may save us money in the end. And I, I just, I agree with the other two councilmen that spoke that why should we throw up another obstacle in the process of this? We're going to end up doing this in.
And that's the problem, the attitude from I have right there is that we're, we're just saying we're going to do this project regardless. I mean, I don't know that I feel good about that attitude. We haven't seen agreements, so. Haven't seen developers in how many years? I mean, it's been over a year since I think we've seen them, so I'm, that's an attitude I think that's bad is to go into it saying we're going to do this.
It's, it's been over a year since you've seen them, but they've been actively involved with this project.
And we did tell them to stay away until we were ready to bring the agreements forward.
And it should have been this to begin with. I mean, that's the problem is it should have been zero because they're getting how much more benefit on the rest of their ground.
I don't. For the negotiations.
What I'm hearing so far is yes, we want to do this, but we also want to have in the development agreement and up to acres in the development agreement. I don't know that that's in there right now. It's.
I think we put a three point six six or whatever, but we could put max four.
Up to three point six six or up to four.
Yeah.
I'm of it.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Livingston, a second from Reba. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Oh.
Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Item seven G, thank you. Seven G is resolution approving an agreement with Fulton and Mink Incorporated for professional services for the Great Western Trail Connection Phase Three project. So phase three of the trail project is going to construct the trail from Clearwater. That's where phase two ends up to Lexington. All right. Do you have anything to add?
I'm just want to remind people that this is professional services, so once the bids come in and we select a construction contractor, I will come back with a second little agreement for construction services. For this estimation on that will be between fifteen and twenty thousand.
And Justin is, I noticed he's on the call in case you have any questions for the engineer. Questions?
Motion.
Let's do it. I'll do motion by Livingston, second by Baker. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven H, resolution approving the execution of easement and quick claim deed for Highway twenty eight and North Avenue intersection improvements project. So this easement and quick claim deed is for the Come and Go property just down the hill from here, right, Wayne?
Correct.
What else you got on this?
This is Come and Go site. It's owned by M D C Coast Four. This is the property we hired Hopkins and Heedner to go down the path of condemnation, but they also at the same time negotiating, they did reach a an agreement, council agreed to the prices a few meetings ago. The attorneys worked out the language of the easements. Everybody's agreed to that. Now we're bringing it forward for final execution.
All right.
Yeah.
Have you received the signed easement from Gary yet?
Have not.
Still have one. Thank you for getting the, the, the dollar amounts to work out.
Yep, so it's nine twenty three square foot for the right away.
Which is what we had to phrase that, right?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion, questions, counsel? Or a motion?
Motion.
Second. All right, motion by Livingston, second by Lester. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call roll?
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yeah.
Reba.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Here's item seven I.
I'm coming quick on that. Thank you for approving that. So we have all the easements now right away, which is great. There's the only remaining item we basically come forward is Onstot's sign up here on North Avenue, that real old sign. We're going to, we have to take that out. So the only left remaining for any sort of negotiation is we told, we worked with him on a digital sign to go up there on North Avenue. So the only left remaining for any sort of negotiation is, we told, we worked with him on a digital sign to go up there on North Avenue. So it's the only thing that may see come forward, did on it, everything else is done, and we're on schedule for spring construction. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Item seven I is resolution approving an agreement with GG Leagues for park and rec activity registration, so I think this one's gonna get a whole lot of use. It's a contract with a company that runs online gaming leagues.
Yes.
Yeah, what, I'll let you explain all that.
Okay, so, online gaming in two thousand and nineteen had over four hundred million gamers and viewers, so it's a really popular sport and continues to grow with large, large numbers. I think attendance is second to the NFL, so it is above the NBA, yeah. It's, it's, it's amazing, they build arenas in cities so that people can come and watch gamers, so. I think that's in my CIP.
I would invest it.
So this contract basically is just saying that we will collect registrations and we'll do a seventy-thirty split on profits with them, and that is the same that we do for our fitness instructors and all the different contracted, like a tennis instructor, all the different contracts that we have for our, probably means and stuff that we do, so.
Do you have one rate, or will it be a resident and non-resident rate?
Um, oh.
I'm asking, because I didn't see it in there.
Um, we will probably do a resident, non-resident rate, and that is just staying consistent with the other programs that we do offer. The forty-dollar registration fee is actually for a season, or yeah, a season pass. There's four seasons a year, and so it's for three months. They can register for as many competitions as they want within that three months, so. And it's very safe. They do provide trained referees and administrators that are in all of the competitions and chat rooms, just to make sure that everything is safe. There are different age brackets, so people will be playing with age-appropriate competitors.
So will, will residents be able to go to the library and use the computers at the library to, to game?
So they have to own their own console, they have to own their own game, and they just have to have internet access, so they take their console and their game and use the library's wifi, yes, they could do that.
So you're gonna have like an Xbox or Sony PlayStation?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
They can't put off of the PC.
Um, I just, I don't know.
Yes, they can. There are PC libraries, so. There you go, you'll have some gamers in.
I'm gonna need a bigger library.
You can, you can add the, the arena to your library.
There.
There you go. All right. Anything else? Okay, any questions or comments?
I was telling Jim, Iowa soccer, who's used GG Leagues to do some of this, so they do a good job, and have done a the administration of it, which is from that.
Just have one question, and the contract is submitted to Council over twenty, and again, Jim, did you read?
I have read it, and I'm good with it. Main thing is it's a ten-day notice to get out, but, and, you know, there's a lot of liability there as far as expenses or port type liability, and if we don't like it, all it takes is a letter to say we're done.
Cool. Motion by Riva, second by Livingston, or by Lester, sorry. I know, I did.
There you go.
I knew it, yeah.
I wouldn't have, except you tried to do it again.
I did. Okay, I'm lost, where am I at?
I need a call roll.
Okay, Lindsay, which call roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Riva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Item seven J is a second reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk, Iowa by rezoning the home at eleven hundred Gordon Avenue from R four high-density residential to R one sixty, single-family residential, so the Methodist Church owns this lot, and is looking to sell the single-family home that is currently there. To get that done cleanly, they'd like to rezone to R one sixty, so this is the second reading of the ordinance. Luke Paris is away sick this evening, Luke Nelson will field questions from council if there's any.
The second reading. Sarah said it should be easy, it's a second reading.
It doesn't, it doesn't say, it doesn't say questions about this, it could be questions. It's gotta be questions about this.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Baker, second by Lester. Lindsay, which call roll?
Councilmember Riva.
Yes.
Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item seven K, third reading of an ordinance amending chapter one twenty-six, mobile food vendors, and chapter one seventy-seven, rates and fees of an art municipal code, so this is the final reading of our new food truck ordinance. Lindsay or Luke will field questions for council. There are any, otherwise all entertaining motions.
Motion.
Motion by Livingston, second by Riva. Lindsay, which call roll?
Councilmember Cool.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Riva.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight, council requiring staff updates. We'll go to Jim. David?
It's something I forgot, it was about the that you already, I don't remember anymore.
Well, if you think about it, just hype up, say hey. Jack?
Uh, nothing.
All right, Ed?
Hey, dude, interesting online course for the city, it's Stormwater Reclamation Course, and actually learn quite a little bit from. Pretty handy.
Yeah?
Yeah, cool. I appreciated the staff sending me the link to it. Other than that, I have nothing.
All right, Tony?
Nothing else for me, mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Wayne?
Nothing.
Good deal. Two staples.
Just real quick, if you weren't aware, Sergeant Trevor Martin has resigned his position with police department, he is now an employee of Polk County Sheriff's Office, and our records clerk office manager, Peggy Crowett, has announced her retirement, and her last day of work with us would be December twenty-second. Due to Sergeant Martin's resignation, we had a hiring process, and we're in the final stages of background check for a new police officer. We hope to give them a conditional offer on Monday and finish their background check next week. And I have worked with Kerry to rewrite the job description for the police office manager, and we hope to post that position, I would say, by next week, for sure. Other than that, everything's going good at the police department.
Awesome, thank you. Jean Kelly?
Just an update, based on our conversations with our bond attorneys last week, we desired, decided to delay the three point two million borrowing for the Sportsplex. Due to the public-private partnership, the tax-exempt status is in question, and we're working through that. Not, not really necessarily a bad thing, we may have to pay a little bit more for interest, maybe forty basis points if it is not tax-exempt. But based on the numbers that they've given us for sponsorships and concessions, I think we'll actually be money ahead with the, with that in mind, so. So that in mind, the, that's why you don't have the preliminary official statement, you're gonna get that next week on the tenth. By law, I need to send it out on the eleventh, it'll still, it'll be in the packets as well, but we are holiday, I think it's Veterans Day next Thursday, so I'll get that out to you on the tenth. And then we'll do the bond sale December second.
So great, thank you, Holly.
Thank you for everybody that participated in that Kosovo visit, that was very cool. Their whole, most of their government is here tonight, right now, so tomorrow night we have an event, Saturday night there's an event, Friday night's at Camp Dodge, and then Saturday night is at DMAC. So if anybody wanted to go to any of those, and you have not heard, or you have trouble with the link, let me know, and we can get that sent back out to you guys. Mayor and Jackie, maybe Ed, they're going, so. That's very cool, and then, again, like we've been talking about forever, we'll have development agreements to you next couple of weeks. So the final rounds of both of those are with the party's attorneys right now, and we are meeting with Sportsplex attorney tomorrow, to tie up their final comments, so hopefully that's, that'll be it. But everything's going really, really well with both those projects, and the sports developer just continues to get interest in more, he's looking at more and more parcels to somehow purchase from diligent or involve in this project, because they're getting a lot of interest from a variety of like Smash Park-type users and group hub, things like that, so. Going well.
Cool, Jean Strahm.
I did pass out the pink-colored flyer, that's our November calendar with all the library activities for children and teens and adults, and we felt comfortable enough that we have put all of the children's toys, and we got a donation of a new train table out in the library, and if you remember, I started just when we shut down, and so it has been absolutely wonderful to hear the children playing and having a wonderful time in the library, even though they do cry when their parents make them leave, and they don't want to go, still happy in a weird way. So we're excited about having that bit of normal come back, and then, thanks to Holly for including the library in the tour today, and thanks to those of you who came on the tour of the library. We're really proud of it, and had some really good interactions with our folks from Kosovo, so thank you for that. And also, thanks to Jim Norrie, who has worked with the folks in California to wrap up the estate for Patricia Lawrence. We finally got the last checks, and it looks like her estate gift to the Norwalk Eastern Public Library is about five hundred ninety-four thousand five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So we are very excited about using that for a future library project, and I have some interesting visions for it, but before I talk about that any further, I would like to talk to some of her survivors to make sure that this is the best way to use that to honor her memory, so. That's, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Hold on, just want to let you guys know that our winter playbook has been published, so that's online, and I'm trying to keep a full feed to view. And then also, the pedestrian bridge for Phase Two of the Great Western Trail will be installed on November twelfth and thirteenth, so virtually will be closed, starting at four PM on Friday, November twelfth. That is, we've talked to the school district, and that is when buses are all through that road, so we won't have to knock in bus service. And then we'll be closed all day Saturday, so just let you guys know that that trip, that project is moving along.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good talk.
All right, thanks. Lindsay?
A couple things. I sent renewal letters to massage therapists today, excuse me. We have five that are licensed with the city, so reminding them to renew for the new year. I will be sending the mobile food vendor ordinance out to Bo Wheels, even though they're not licensed with us currently, she wanted a copy of it. And I will also be sending it to Off the Griddle and Uncommon Grounds. I sent boards and commissions to the mayor today, can shuffle you all around to see C's fit for next year. And I think I have to do something for represencing, even though our city is not making any changes, I think I saw the report something in the Secretary of State's office, so I'm working on that.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Um, just one thing, when I was working with Caitlin on Norwalk Nice, I was wondering about the low-to-moder income housing improvement grant program. We haven't heard anything about it, I don't see anything on our website, I was wondering if anybody knows about it, has anybody applied, has any money gone out, how's it, how's it been going? It's been a couple of months.
David Lester actually hit me up about that, and I had a conversation with community development department, and they are working on revisions to that, because the pro, as far as getting that word out or making some changes to do more advertising, but, so David Lester did bring that up to me.
Well, Luke Paris and I talked about it, too.
Okay, then maybe you have more update?
They were trying to work with one certain property that needs some focused attention. And that person has evidently told them. So it was the resident that said no. We were offering free money and the residents said no. And, and I asked where we were at to open it up and go from there, and that was, that, that's, I think, where we're at, is that that needs to happen, so.
To do more advertising.
That was written for Luke when on vacation. First time.
So we approved a program because we wanted to use it for one property, it was not the intent to open it to everybody from day one?
Did you get that from the discussion? Because that's what I took from the discussion.
No, that's what I took from what you just said.
No, that's what I had taken from the discussion when we were doing, is that it was being geared towards one or two properties specifically at the time.
I don't know that that's true, I think, I think they were using the one property as a test case.
That, that one was a test case, yes, because it was, it fit what we needed, wanted to.
Well, I don't think it was primarily for that property at all, but certainly that was, there was one that was in mind as a top candidate when everything was being passed. I know from my standpoint also, I've, I've talked to Luke, and I think a lot of it is also, he's trying to get together the forms to implement it. He passed the program, that's, it's authorized, but I think also there's a lot of the devil's in the details as far as forms and stuff like that, and I know we've met Adam once regarding what I think is needed, and he's got films on that, he's discussed it with others, but I think, you know, and that was a lot of this you, you brought up, I think, also when we were talking about it. For simple name. How we're gonna fall off on as far as mortgages and notes, and how that's gonna work.
Sounds report, great.
Three items, they're all regional items, well beyond Norwalk limits. The first one is regional water. Just to tell you that Ted Corrigan tried to reach out to me to give an update on where things are at with regional water, I'm playing phone tag, but I plan on getting an update, so hopefully there's more information at the next council meeting. The next one is the airport, I believe at the last council meeting, we had told you about that the Des Moines Airport is planning a significant expansion for the terminal. I want to say quadrupling the size, it's a much larger facility, six hundred-plus-million-dollar project, and they're now at the point where they're looking at how they're going to finance all that. So the airport has actually started with the Metro Managers Group for rolling out thoughts about how different mechanisms for financing. At the same time, they have communicated with the governor's office, and the governor has proposed using two hundred and fifty million dollars of the AARP, the rescue funds, but looking for some match funds. So now they're looking at the whole metro to see what kind of cost share. So I've been having some discussions with Gene, the mayor. The mayor and I are gonna meet with Aaron DeCook at the county to just kind of talk through what some of that might look like. I've even reached out to Indian Oil and had some discussions with them. So there'll be more to come on that, as far as what kind of support we might be open to.
You know, Luke, on that issue, I thought I, when we talked to Cindy Grassley that time, I thought that he had mentioned that funding for that was contained in the infrastructure bill that they actually voted through. That was a part of, you know, I might be misremembering, but I could have swore that was part of the conversation, not the computer conversation, the one in Indian Oil.
Oh, okay. I, I wasn't there for that or to hear that part of it, but I'm not aware of further federal dollars other than through the rescue funds.
All right, thank you.
I, I think there's a significant amount of money in, in that one-point-two-trillion-dollar bill that the Senate passed, and I don't know that it's specific to the airport.
Okay, maybe, maybe that's right, maybe that was just a comment that it might be available, so. Got to get through the House, yeah.
Right. Right.
We're just at the very early stages, so you're only getting a glimpse of it. They, they plan to come to councils to go around across the metro and explain the project and give more detailed information. I'm just kind of giving you a small teaser of what that might look like. And the last thing, we're continuing to work on the lift station idea. You may recall that we worked with Hubble to do a lift station for Holland Point. They're moving quickly. They're ready to proceed down that path. Wayne and I have been working with Tony Blizzi on an alternative location to move that lift station further east over towards Adia Street. That would open up other area of development. It could also help us down the road with. Water Tower Land. So all these are intertwined. Part of this discussion then caused us to think outside our corporate limits. Are there some other gravity sewer options? So I made communication with Des Moines to talk about a possible partnership for sending that affluent east. Towards Middle Creek, of which it would be, become more significantly towards Des Moines as opposed to even a Norwalk project. So we just touched on that. I sent that information off to Des Moines, waiting to hear back from them if they would have any interest. Our viewpoint is it doesn't really make a lot of sense just because it serves an area that's already significantly developed such as Twin Lakes. But we thought it would be better for Des Moines to give us that answer as opposed to us making that answer for them.
All right. And I really don't have anything tonight, so I would entertain much to adjourn. Motion by Cool, second by Livingston. All those in favor say aye.
I have one more thing. I'm so sorry. I packaged up all the leftover food. It's in the little conference room. David, when you're transporting that salad, be careful because it wants to leak some water. It's wrapped. Please take the food. There's desserts. Sorry.
Seven ten.